I believe we should see the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I maintain a motion to approve agenda. Motion in second discussion, questions? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes of the November fourth meeting, there are no additions or corrections. I would like to have a motion to approve that.
I have one correction on committee reports. It should be three citizens instead of us citizens for the request for vote about this.
Is that?
On second, third page, it should be three residents instead of us citizens.
Any additions or corrections? I maintain a motion to approve was corrected.
Some move. Second.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the claim, Jones in between one hundred and twenty-five thousand nine oh five sixty-six, do I have a motion to approve that?
Some move.
Motion in second. Discussion or questions?
What's that escrow property on Sixth Street?
I think that's down payment on this house probably here, isn't it?
Yes.
Over here.
Yeah, that one where, uh, on, uh, Flint Avenue, the HUD house that we were trying, that Public Works Committee had been working on for a while to try to get acquired. HUD finally came through with accepting our offer.
Any other question in the discussion? Not all? Favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the current claims, ninety-two thousand forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Do I have a motion to approve them? Some of, second. Motion in second. Discussion or questions?
I got a question. On front page, we bought a laptop computer. Where did that go?
Uh, that one's at the Evans Punge so they can work on the front, at the front desk.
Does it stay at Punge?
I guess I don't know yet because we're having trouble getting wireless downstairs throughout the building. So the intent is for it to stay there, but I don't know that it has been staying there at this point. I'm not sure that way.
They didn't have computers there before?
Upstairs. There was never any computers downstairs. For a little more efficiency, the director, assistant director, when they're on duty and watching the front desk, instead of just twiddling their thumbs and, and watching the food cook, they can bring the computer down and work down there instead of having to go upstairs and have somebody sitting at the desk. Efficiency measure.
But only if we get it to where they can use it there.
Yes. The IT guy got ahold of me this morning and is working down, by the way, this week he said. He can tell me which day.
Any other question in the session?
Page three, does You Muckers in Motel Six signs, what actually, what did they give for signs?
Uh, Scott, Scott has the makeup of that, but you, they're, they're like a sign, signs.
They're all the same.
What do they say?
Uh, donated by. The You Muckers on one side and Motel Six on the other side of the creek. It's up to you to name, name the party as the cultural director.
I would say You Muckers.
You Muckers.
And page eleven, is this trailer rented? What did we rent a trailer for?
That's under the golf course.
I don't remember that building at all. I think it was in there.
It, it just said trailer rented. It didn't give any description of where it went.
Did they have to take the chemicals in or something?
Well, it's not more than chemicals. How many seconds it says it's supposed to be. Does that mean gas?
I'll find out what they're interested in calling it. Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Now, motion in second to approve the current claim. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And communication from the public, cemetery board, you want to talk?
We just heard some talk about cutting back at the cemetery, cutting back our help at the cemetery. We were kind of concerned if this was happening or if it was just talk or if we were going to lose our cemetery person.
I know we talked about it the other day and I have not had a chance to get it thoroughly since then, but our plan is to keep the cemetery up. We have to keep it so it looks nice.
Yes.
It looks, looks pretty good right now.
We're really pleased with how it looks.
Okay.
So we really don't want to lose our cemetery person.
Well, it's an indication to me that you're not going to.
We're not going to?
I don't think so.
That's good. We just wanted to convey our thoughts that we were really concerned about it.
Hey, like, like I said the other day, that will be a personal decision that Harley and I will deal with. It's not a board decision, nor is it a council decision, but we will keep this in mind.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Evans Punge update. Emily.
I have a copy of, I'm so glad you're here. If you mind if I stand up here? Good evening. All you, as you all know, I am Emily Campbell. I'm the facility director at Evans Punge. I'm here tonight to give you a little update on how Evans Punge is doing and some exciting things that will be happening. I'd like to start off by giving you guys a little background of myself so you can know me on a more personal level. I've lived in Hot Springs for almost sixteen years. I was a twelve-year classmate and graduated in two thousand and ten from Hot Springs High School. I am recently married to my husband, Matthew, and I have four stepchildren and one son of my own, Lincoln. I also recently purchased a house here now to make Hot Springs my forever home. I've been at Evans Punge for almost eight years now and I've worked every position in the building, including front desk, lifeguarding, janitorial duties, and now management. I have also worked as the executive assistant at the Chamber of Commerce and was also a pharmacy technician at Shopko Pharmacy, but my heart has always been in Evans Punge, which is the reason I've always made my living back there. The city of Hot Springs taking ownership of Evans Punge has been a learning experience for everyone, including myself. When the city of Hot Springs took over ownership of Evans Punge in July, it was quite overwhelming at first, but we all managed to get through it. Taking a management title as well as switching ownership was such a short-term career and was one of the hardest things that I have worked through and accomplished in my professional career, career as well in my personal life. I'm confident in my abilities as a facility director for the plunge and I am proud of the job I have done on taking such an overwhelming task during such the busiest time of the season. Evans Punge has two seasons. We have our busy season and our off-season. From May through September, we are known as a tourist attraction where most of our money is made by walk-in rates and tour groups. Then we have our April through, October through April where we are known as a city pool. During this time, we rely on memberships, groups, and other things such as birthday parties and donations. Now that we are all, we are well off and tour all season, things have definitely slowed down. This is the time of year where our marketing, advertising, and maintenance issues will be handled. One of the first projects that we have started to gain donations is called the Friends of Evans Punge. This project includes a gold, silver, and bronze donation packages. The gold package is a five-hundred-dollar donation. This includes their name on the plaque under the gold donations, the year they donated, a T-shirt, a free locker use for that year, a towel each visit, and their name mentioned in the paper. The silver donation package is two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and includes their name under the silver donation column, a free towel each visit, and their name mentioned in the paper as well. The bronze package is a donation of a hundred dollars. This package includes a free towel each visit and their name mentioned in the paper. I will be going around town to several businesses asking for these donations as well to ensure this project is successful not only through our members but through our town as well. Any donations from any other businesses will also be, will receive the business name on the appropriate plaque as well and their name in the paper. We have done a few different specials since we have had the city own, which one of them is a six-months membership with one month free. We sold thirty-one six-month memberships. One of my biggest goals this winter is to get the word out to the surrounding areas that Evans Punge is now open year-round. As you all know, for the past three years, Evans Punge has been closed from October first through April first. Although this may hurt us, our first winter, I am working with many different radio stations as well as newspapers and other forms of advertising like Black Hills Band and Lakes, Black Hills Vacation, and Educational Travel, Institute of America to ensure people know that we are open year-round. I've been working with Lisa from Rushmore Radio as well as a gentleman named Jim from Juhamel Broadcasting, which broadcasts over eight different radio stations all over the Black Hills as well as broadcasting out of five different states. I believe that constantly getting our name out into the public will really help increase sales and memberships in our full season. I've always been looking into the future to see what the plunge could be in a few years' time. I believe that with the constant or consistent advertising that this will boost our admission sales. I also have been working with Brett from the Hot Springs Star to make sure we have an ad in there every week as well as the additional add-in Star Extra and the Shatter newspaper. We know of a maintenance man, Steve Prey, who has started about a month ago and to say the least, I'm very impressed with his work. When you come to the plunge every day, it is hard sometimes to see the little maintenance issues that need to be fixed. Steve has done a great job of handling those issues. At our last advisory board meeting, there was a suggestion to have a sign that the members could write down any ideas they had or maintenance issues or concerns that they would like to handle, and we got a great response. Having this list will help see areas that need maintenance that we may not see every day and that will also help ensure that the members are being heard. Again, these are just suggestions and not everything on the list may be completed, but we hope to complete most of them as long as they are within our budget. Some of the more simple suggestions have already been completed such as getting heat into the locker rooms and putting bigger clocks into the pool area. We've seen a lot of suggestions for a new roof, a new floor, and our health club, which are much more time-consuming and costly projects. One of my biggest struggles down at the plunge this year has been keeping consistent help. I've had many of people apply, start work, and after we train them, they decide that this job isn't for them. I'm really hoping this winter that, hoping this winter and that the following busy season to get established set of workers that the plunge will need that are dedicated not only in their job but the success of Evans Punge. Having help that is invested in not only their job but the success of the business will really help us far as having someone or having everybody on the same page. I have lost several front desk staff and cleaners due to wages being lowered and was often working during the day and coming in and cleaning the evening. I have now hired Alan to clean locker rooms and he is doing that seven nights a week. Another issue that I am facing this winter is the loss of our aquatics director, Joe Stur, who is looking to step down from his position, a position that he has held for nine years. He is responsible for certifying and training lifeguards, managing pool operations, scheduling lifeguards, and helps with pool maintenance. With Joe stepping down, I will become responsible, responsible for certifying and training lifeguards in any duties that I will need to carry out that he currently does. I was hoping to have my certification completed by December. Unfortunately, there are no classes available until late March of two thousand and fourteen, and even these are not set in stone. I've been talking with Bart Lumbo from Rapid City as she is checking out different scenarios to try to get me certified. I've done some research online with the Red Crafts Association. The closest place I had to take my certification course is in Denver, Colorado during the first week of December. I'm trying my best to get into a class as soon as one becomes available and meets my schedule at the plunge as well. With this being said, I am working with the advisory board, Harley, Don, and the assistant manager of Evans Punge to ensure the plunge succeeds. Our members want to see it succeed, the people of Hot Springs want to see it succeed, and I know I do as well. Like I said in the beginning, this is a learning experience for everyone, but when everyone works together, that's when I think things will happen. I am trying nothing but my best to ensure that the success of the Evans Punge is nothing but the best. Appreciate you all being here tonight to hear a few updates on things happening at the plunge and feel free to ask me your questions.
Anybody have a question, Emily?
I have a question, but not, nothing like you said, that's great. Uh, we have a billboard at Manicotta and I had a complaint today of, excuse me, and how bad it looks. So I drove out there to do it and tore all that. I don't know.
It's like a half board, right? It's not a, like, not a full billboard?
Well, yeah, kinda, but I think it's a wrap or something and it's just getting tore up and it's bad.
But DLT has five billboards, I believe. Is that what they?
I assume so.
Along the stretch out to Wyoming, along seventy, along eighteen, I think maybe one was on seventy-one. I can't remember. The DLT monitors those and have those on their work schedule and they've reported that that needs to be fixed before the end of the year.
On?
We'll be seeing the bill coming through for, for new vitals.
New?
Yep. I don't know. We, we talked early on when Steve was hired on, on getting the schedule, on making sure the billboards were, were going to be working, and I don't know if he's had time to get out and look at those yet either, so we appreciate the input and we'll need to get on top of that.
Might point out that Sarah is also here with Emily and I, her assistant down there. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi, Sarah. Did you have any, Sarah?
No, that was, that was good.
Okay.
I was gonna comment. You are working with that computer doing updates on personnel, or their- The job descriptions. Job descriptions. So I mean, the computer is being used down there.
Yes, I am able to do my spreadsheets and stuff. I don't need the internet for that.
Right.
Once Joe leave?
Uh, Joe will be residing in the end of March of two thousand and fourteen.
Is there anybody stepped forward that is interested in that job or?
Uh, the only other person that holds that title in Hot Springs is Rochelle Steele. She was the previous assistant manager when the Board of Directors had owned it and she doesn't make a decision. And I believe the only other person in this area on the western side of South Dakota that holds that title is Bart Lumbo as well. And she's the lady that I've been working with to try to get something for me to get certified with.
Now, how long will your certification allow you to renew? How long before you have to go through the long process do you have to?
Um, Joe has been there. I have been working with Joe for almost eight years and he has done it once. So I mean, I can certainly find out from him, but as far as I know, I think maybe in four hundred years. And the more lifeguards that you certify, the longer your license gets extended out. Joe doesn't want to certify anybody anymore because that will push his license out farther. His license will expire in April.
Are you just planning on wanting to get the certification?
I would really like to see it. I, um, it's a wonderfully ratio when you teach a class for that certification. I would really like to see a second person. I don't mind taking up some of Joe's duties in the off-season. In the on-season during the summertime, I think that would be very hard for me to keep up hold as far as running the pool and everything up front as well. But I don't mind certifying and teaching lifeguards. But I would still like to have a second person to fall back on if anything were to happen.
The class that you mentioned in Denver in December, you know what cost did that is?
It's five hundred dollars. That's how much it is for the certification for the LGI license, which is the lifeguard instructors.
How long is the class?
Uh, it's five, forty to forty.
Do we have anything in the budget to cover that?
Probable wise, we didn't put much in the budget, but if that's something that the council wants to do, we'll have to rearrange something to get it done sooner. She's been trying to get something in South Dakota and save the trip.
No, we had, we had Joe until March, you know, and I would, I, the calendar for the Red Crafts only goes until December as far as I can see on the internet, and there may be something that was scheduled in January or February that may be in Denver or closer. But I've checked in Omaha, Sioux Falls, different places like that, but it starts close to say be Denver, Colorado.
But no one at this time is really showing any interest in helping you with that position.
I talked to Joe about that today and he said there is no one down there that has stepped up or that could probably walk right into it.
Is this gonna be difficult for you to try to hire somebody and then take the training right off the bat without knowing the facility?
Sure. I mean, I, I have head lifeguards in the wintertime that can help run breaks, things like that, you know, and I, I can make schedules out. I mean, I can, Steve can pick up pool maintenance that Joe does as far as, you know, shopping the pool and things like that, ordering clarity, you know, certain, you know, pool maintenance issues. But as far as training and certifying lifeguards, I believe that I am the only one that is interested and willing to take up.
Yeah, that's kind of a pressing issue for us. Really.
Are there certain qualifications you need to take the test?
Uh, you have to have a lifeguard, a regular lifeguard license for one year before you can take that. Um, you have to be able to swim five hundred yards, I believe, and maybe three hundred. And you have to pass the through written exam.
Right. I still think it was five hundred.
I believe it was five hundred.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll come back to communication from the public and now we do have a seven fifteen hearing on the special assessment of track nine street improvements. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard regarding that this evening? This is the public hearing. We've been through this before. We went through it, I think, two meetings ago and we made a change in the interest rate of us the reason for this again. We reported what the council wanted to be four and a half percent. Okay, I'll close the hearing and we do have a follow-up resolution to that as the number twenty-six. The council would like to adopt that resolution and maintain a motion to adopt. Motion in second to adopt the resolution, discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay, back to communication with the public. Does anybody else wish to be heard this evening?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Linda Bardell and I'm the personal representative for the estate of Alfredi Hatch, and I was going to come and give you an update on the Hatch property up there. And we have gained access to the properties on, this past Friday, and we have filled three dumpsters and taken out numerous large items on trailers like satellite dishes and stuff like that. And I know there was a little discussion about whether or not we would be allowed in the building, but today when Cheyenne Sanitation brought us a third dumpster to fill, he wants everything sorted. He wants the construction stuff in a different dumpster than the, the trash. So we've been trying to accommodate him with that and I think it slowed down our progress. And he's only been allowing us one dumpster a day. He brought us one early on Friday and by twelve, I think it was about twelve-thirty on Friday, I called for a second dumpster and she said, what happened to the first one we gave you? And I says, it's full. She says, well, this is highly unusual and we're not sure if we can keep up with you. We asked for two dumpsters this morning and we only got one. You know, I mean, we can get them filled really fast if we have them. Over the weekend, by Saturday evening, we had the second dumpster full and we couldn't get another one until today and that was kind of iffy. But we're still working on it every day and I think for the most part, we're gonna take at least tomorrow off because our, our crew has been working the last four days and, and we're just not able, we have a full dumpster ready to, for them to pick up, but they can't pick it up till tomorrow afternoon. So when you don't have a dumpster to put things in, you know, I mean, you can make your little piles around the property and then pick them up later, but we still have to get the trash and the paper out of there so it's not blown all over the neighborhood. And the neighbors, each one of the neighbors has contacted us and they're ecstatic that something is finally getting done there and they're really happy about it.
Good.
We haven't had any complaints.
We are too.
Yep.
Yeah, well, thank you.
We're really happy.
Thank you. So we will continue to plug away at this and, and get it all cleaned up and, and stuff and so I just want to thank you guys for working with us and, and we will continue, continue with our progress.
Do you have any, any idea how long it's gonna be before the house is removed?
We were hoping to get that knocked down today if he would have been able to bring us a second dumpster for the wood and, and siding and stuff. And he said, when he called me back this afternoon, he said that, I said, can you bring me one in the morning? And he's going to Pine Ridge tomorrow, several loads, and he said he could not promise me a dumpster till about one-thirty tomorrow. So I will be over there waiting for him to bring the dumpster in, you know, but it was kind of a chilly weekend with the wind blowing and stuff and, and I guess we did not realize when we did knock a hole in the wall, when we knocked two holes in the wall, how bad the stench was going to be. And so it has not been pleasant, so, but we tried to stay up to the end of it.
Well, I can, I can tell you for, for myself, I'm very happy that, that you guys have taken on that task and without having caused the city any further activity on it.
They have a freezer by the side of that table on the pole magnet.
Yeah, and, and that was something that we could not put in the, we couldn't put the freezer in the dumpster, but we could empty the contents in the dumpster and the guy wasn't very happy this morning.
Yeah. They had people throw it up all over.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't like throwing up, but sometimes you can't help not.
Well, thank you for the update, Linda. We appreciate what you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. What?
Sure.
I, I must admit, I never have been able to find out the paper and I bet I've missed some papers. How the plunge was financed?
Harley, if you want to ask that.
Sure. Plunge has been in operation four months. We reported to the advisory committee at their last meeting a week ago or two weeks ago now. I can't remember when it, when it was here. Time flies. We are sitting, collection, revenue collection of three hundred and twenty-four thousand for the four months. Expenses are two hundred and twelve thousand. We are sitting right now in the black at a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the operational end of it. We are still sitting with cash in the bank for getting some of the building repairs done, the roof being the main concern, and of course, the, the old owners have set aside for, for some of the roof money there. We are running about thirty thousand for expenses in October per month. If we continue on that, we have enough money to get us through January and if we don't take any additional revenue in over the next three months, we're, with what Emily was talking about on the promotional things and the advertising that's going on, the hope is that we'll generate enough revenue to stay in the black through February. We know that June is the second best month out of the year. We did not have the opportunity to take advantage of that for this year, so, right now, after a third of the year being gone, we're under what the estimated budget would be if you were to, to take those four months and annualize that, so I think things are looking promising.
Does that include the loan payments?
Uh, the loan-
I mean, did you borrow the money for the plunge?
Yes, we, we did borrow the money. The payments are semi-annual payments and within the budget, we were budgeting for the hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual loan payment paid semi-annually. And it looks like if the revenue continues on the, the direction that it's going, again, June will be the determining factor and we don't know what June revenues will be for us, but that'll be the, kind of the kick that gets us back up if we do struggle for the February, March, April time period.
Who did the city borrow the money from? Who did the city borrow the money from?
Uh, bonding, they were actually bonded, yep, we bonded through Dorsey, uh, Dordie, uh, with Dorsey being the bond counsel for it.
So, the funds that you took the money from have been paid back? Didn't you borrow, the city borrow the money from themselves?
Yes, yes, yes.
So, that's been paid back?
Yes.
I had had a couple of calls over the weekend, uh, and I was going to chime in, uh, 'cause I didn't get anything on the agenda, uh, to have Harley explain how it came about and who it was through. Uh, there were some people that were calling me asking, "Are these city bonds?" And I said, "No, they're not." Uh, it's bonded through a company for the city of Hot Springs. It's not, uh, bonds that people can go and buy.
What interest rate?
Four point one. That is correct, is it?
They are municipal bonds, so they are city of Hot Springs municipal bonds, so anybody that's in the, in the market for investments that would be of municipal bonding nature, uh, you can sure contact Dorsey and Company, is the name of the company in Sioux Falls-
I did not know that.
-for purchasing of them. What usually happens on the loud, large ones, they just go to some of the larger mutual funds and sell them all off at, at one time. They do, uh, they didn't ask this time, but they have in the past, 'cause I've dealt with them. You know, ask if there are any locals that might be interested in buying any of them before they do sell off a big chunk to some of the bigger mutual funded investors.
Give calls back to those people that don't know that.
They can call Dorsey.
They are available through Dorsey.
They, they can call Dorsey, and they may or may not be available right now.
And that's in Sioux Falls.
That's in Sioux Falls, we can provide them with the phone number if they wish.
Thank you. Well.
Yeah, I have a suggestion for you.
Okay.
Your friend should always talk about that, how good he did something with the, uh, health club in Minnesota. Why don't you rent in the upstairs and make some money for bringing that into the plunge? And he can show how good, he might make some money on it. Remember, on every meeting, he come over here, "I make so much money on a health club in Minnesota." Give him the opportunity to do that.
Maybe he's retired now.
Whoa.
Still mine.
But you're still working, eh? Let's, let's him show what he can do. And the next question I have, last meeting you just talked about the signs, how are they going? Because I just heard there was order or something like this, any time when they're gonna be ended, put it up, is it gonna be lit it?
We've got the signs, the welcome signs you ordered, and as soon as we get one of them made, we'll have the specs that we can give it to our local contractor, start building the base.
You're talking about the welcome guy, the spring's effects?
But is any time for it, when they're gonna be made or something like that?
They're in the process of being made now, I don't know if it's every day, Wally. I'm guessing that it shouldn't take more than six weeks or so to make them, they've been ordered for at least, probably three weeks. So, we should, we should have something pretty soon.
And who made them?
Conrad.
Conrad? It was made from wood or what?
Uh, it's a, what is it made of? It's not wood.
Bug?
Sort of a plastic composite of some kind, yeah.
But the pillars that are holding are-
It'll be concrete covered with stone. One of the back, your dealer, we need you to remember, we're talking about profit loss on that, the loss of about sixty thousand worth with the property tax. You need to kind of figure that in too.
One more.
Okay, one more question.
What happened to the, you, an RV dump or something by the Mueller Center? You've been looking for it all summer.
It's in progress.
Is it there?
We have a lot of projects the city crews did this year.
I know, but that-
And the pavement's cut over here now, but we got a couple of big events coming up here at the civic center, and we don't want to tear up the parking lot before those events.
So, you're still gonna do it, it is in the works, okay. Slowly, slowly.
Government works slow.
Not IRS.
Any other communication from the public? Continue, I've got a, the second reading of the capital improvement project ordinance. It's to set up the fund for special projects in the community. This is a public hearing, if anyone wishes to be heard, this is the time.
We will be taking in some donations, uh, brought in by the group that's been holding the, the mud run and color run in town. They generated, uh, a couple of thirty thousand dollars of income already, and they're wanting to see some, some activities for kids in, uh, in the parks. So, as they get to the point where they've gathered enough funds to do that, I'm sure they'll be in the council to get permission to, to locate them somewhere within the city parks.
No comments from the public, I don't have a motion to approve the second reading. Some move. A motion by Greg, second by Carl.
Okay, do you?
More discussion? This is an ordinance, call and roll, please.
Ashley?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Wega?
Yes.
Get down, this is mayor.
Thanks, okay. We also have a first reading of an ordinance to, uh, deal with some zoning. It's permitted uses of the Gulf Forest commercial district. It will allow for its townhomes and condominiums in the Gulf Forest, Gulf Forest commercial districts out there. Something that a person's asked us about, has been in the planning and zoning. They've had a hearing on it, and they recommended that we adopt this ordinance. So, I would entertain a motion to continue with the second reading at our next meeting.
A move?
Second.
Got a motion to second to continue and have a second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close call. And personnel, we've got to approve the hiring of Curtis Smith, the uncertified police officer, thirteen forty. I entertain a motion to approve, so move?
Second.
Motion to second, discussion of questions? How many uncertified officers do we currently have? I think we've got two. Now we got one we're quitting tomorrow, so, where a little lane looks to me like, uh...
I'm told that that's how we've thrown one, wants to apply for the next one. I don't know if it's true, but that's what BJ told me.
Really? How many uncertified officers can you have? I think we can have any number. Well, basically, you could have just run with a, a reserve department then, couldn't you? Yep. We got to pay them. Save the back stairs. We were always told about the label, so I got some kind of question. So, they can only be uncertified for how long, is it one year? Well, we can have any number as far as I know. Unless I don't know that answer for sure, maybe, maybe there's a limit or percentage. Any other discussion? Got a motion to second to approve the hiring of Curtis Smith, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close call. And the other personnel items, you can see on the agenda. New business, Calvary Baptist will not need the Kidney Springs bandstand for the nativity program, they're gonna be using the VA steps, so we don't have to deal with that. The state has given both the twenty-ninth and the twenty-fourth off for the state employees, and typically what we've done as a city is to follow that lead of the state and do whatever the state has done.
What's the meeting about the plunge, are they closing until?
On Christmas they'll be closed.
Not Thanksgiving?
Are you gonna be closed Thanksgiving? Yeah, Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Is it the day after?
When's Thanksgiving?
Wednesday. Thursday, the day after the plunge will be open. Wednesday?
It's a Thursday.
So, Thursday out. The plunge will be open the day after. Come on, Wally.
But the plunge will not get that day off. The plunge is going to be taking three holidays a year. Don't I remember, uh, Easter, Christmas, and Thanksgiving.
It'll be closing early in Christmas Eve.
Yeah, it'll probably close early afternoon on the twenty-fourth. So, if we would like to follow the state lead, I entertain a motion to approve that.
So, move?
Second.
Motion to second, more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close call. And Harmony Lodges will be having a fundraising event, a gun raffle, starting in November till January seventeenth. We don't have to take council action on that anymore from the law that was passed about a year ago. However, if the council doesn't want this raffle to happen, they can pass the resolution and stop it. So, it's, it's on the agenda, if anybody for some reason wouldn't have wanted it. We've got, uh, a couple of flats to approve. The first one is in the Minicotta Edition, it's got some unfurnished city acreage. County wants to sell, does county want to sell this, I think so. There's a piece of land, there's one lot that's flat all the way around it, a couple of different people want to buy it, but it doesn't have a legal description. So, if we approve this flat, it will simply be called Lot Sixteen, it's already on all the maps, but it's, it's a legal step to identify the lot in order for it to be sold to one of the two neighbors.
It does, Scottson is supposed to be.
Where's located, located on Minicotta?
It's up on Evanside, it's at the very, there's one big lot where the old hotel used to be, and, and this is right next to it.
The old motel used to be up there, it's between that and the land to the west of it, there's just one lot that never had a lot number.
You mean the old campground?
Yeah.
The Evanside Hotel.
There was a hotel right in there too.
Cabin or hotel. Anyway. Between that and the property to the west, there's one lot, that's, it's all drawn on everything, but it was not, hasn't been scripted. It was generally called Lot Sixteen.
There's no easements or anything, or, or there's no utilities, anything, we're just gonna place? Is it next to a road where somebody can get to it?
Yeah, the road comes right in, past front of it, but-
Go down here?
Why didn't he put down our package?
That's a good question.
I asked, I asked-
I asked the same thing, he said it wasn't able, it was too big to put in or something. Little small one like that would have hurt you, right?
We can, if you don't want to act, we can do it for the next week.
I went and asked, is why I was, I, I needed to know too.
Motion table, till we see it in our packets?
Take it. A motion by West. Second by West, all in favor of table and say aye?
Aye.
Close call. The other flat is that piece of land out in, uh, back nine addition, where there was that one sliver of land that was needed for a driveway, and that's the one that we changed on that first, during the first set of hearings, we took out that one lot because it belongs to this next lot, they didn't even know it was platted separately. This is the flat that we asked the people to-
We have a small one of that one.
Oh, did you?
Did you?
Okay, I didn't have either one in the morning.
No, not tonight, we're not talking.
Before we talked- Before, when we, when we made the motion to do it.
And they're replating all in one lot now?
Yeah.
Yes, it's all platted now, it's one lot. And that's what we'd asked them to do in order to take it off the wall.
And they had stated at that first hearing that we had on the back nine, uh, special assessment, that they would take care of that, so, they followed through with it.
So, I entertain a motion to approve this flat.
Come on.
A motion by Greg, but a second?
Aye.
Make a favor. More discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close call. And Carl said he had the leave, did you have anything that you guys talked about?
There, um, we didn't talk, we didn't really have a meeting, but there were a couple of things we discussed about, um, and, um, I think, depending on how powerful it is, we'll try and have another meeting, this, um, maybe this Friday, we don't know, but, you know, we'll, so, um...
Okay. Public Works, Dwight?
Johnson Patrol has changed their meters out, but they, uh, did a few things, they didn't quite finish their work, so, we are calling them out to the next public works meeting to have a sit-down with them and see what went on. Water fill station, we're still, still looking at several areas, and hopefully by the next meeting, we can have a recommendation that all our fine folks can put ahead.
If you get something done in time, you might even include an indemnical package.
We talked a little on the lagoon lease at Maverick, uh, that lease is up in two thousand sixteen, and, uh, we're starting to talk about it and see if we need to make any changes to it. The little house across the street here that, uh, the city has a contract to purchase that for thirty-five hundred dollars, and we're planning on adding it for parking for the civic center. Tearing it down is pretty bad shape. Uh, we're gonna start cameraing all the sewer mains pretty soon, uh, in preparation of the state highway repair project. And city cleanup days will be December second through the sixth, weather permitting, and that will be the last cleanup for two thousand persons.
Now, do you see, you thought there were the different proposals for the highway going to be done?
We haven't had public meetings since they were here the first time. They said they'll be back, they had hoped they'd be back before now, but they're gonna still be back, I'm, I'm thinking this fall is the next public meeting.
So, about three? What, they, they told us that that time they're gonna have three different-
No, he said they'll be back for at least two more, I think, to maybe two, three weeks ago. But I don't have the, the next one in the schedule yet. Public safety, Craig?
Yes, sir. We never did get a police report. Bob said he turned it in, but nobody at City Hall seemed to know where that. Fire department agreement, BJ went back to fire department, talked to them. Dave and I had a meeting about that, and he, Don was there, and we don't really think we need a contract with fire department. We think they're really running okay, that we really don't need any. Deb?
I know we had to, but-
I did too, I thought that was what we had just said, but-
We don't have to, no. Talking to, talking to the council, but we, we decided maybe we don't think we need it to happen.
I thought, we thought maybe it might be beneficial to have a little two-week reach or-
Well, one thing, all their meetings are open to the public, and all their finances and everything, so the city councilman wants to know anything, all that good.
And I talked to Chief, and, uh, who is one of the chief, every meeting they have, they go through their finances, that's one of the first topics. Anybody that shows up is open to ask questions and see what is there. So, as far as their financials, if that's the reason anybody wants this contract, it is open to basically the public. Nobody in the public is allowed to-
Sure, yeah.
They also go through their standard programs, and you talk about the maintenance and repairs of the both buildings, which they utilize, one is actually owned by the city. So, all that stuff that you're asking, being that contract, is already open to us, is open to the public. And as part of their standard meetings, everything.
So, we don't have any problems with donating?
I don't think so.
And they are open for us to go to meetings as council people or as firefighters.
One of the key issues is equipment.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, I said, if for any reason they would just disband as a fire department, they would sell the equipment, and the city doesn't have anything, that if we have to go into the fire business. So, I mean, the only, only thing I could think of is where we might want, is some, some kind of-
And all the money goes to nonprofit organization if they sell the equipment.
Redback remains if they sell equipment, you have a town with no fire equipment.
Like they said, we can, we can get any fire department we want for fireworks, that's what I'm gonna do.
But bringing that question up, there's two of them, uh, they both said, for whatever reason, that they can't honestly see in their own mind where they would ever go.
Been in business since eighteen ninety, usually since-
Still the same original fire department that we've had since this town's been founded. And they said if they were ever put in position, for whatever reason, with the first right- And they said if they were ever put in position for whatever reason, that the first right of refusal would go to their own city. If anything ever went up for sale, they would approach the city saying, what would you want? Anything left over we would not want that they will put up for sale would be.
And maybe we could get. Maybe we could get something like that from them, just a statement letter saying that if they ever do close down, the city has first right to equip.
We can always discuss that a little.
Best to go above our own equipment.
Well.
So I can see it.
None of our equipment's there anymore, they already sold it.
But you have to take them into consideration, if you want to put down that we want to purchase pieces of equipment at the cost of some of these pieces of equipment, you guys.
Need to put it down when we donate the money?
When we donate the money, but the thing is, by the time we paid off that piece of equipment, that piece of equipment is gonna be considered obsolete. So you'd actually be paying for it for years for something that's not gonna do you any good.
At eighty thousand, you give them, wouldn't even scratch a bit.
We're talking over time here. This is not just about here.
But they do service the town's fire protection, and they do a damn good job of it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Nobody disputes. But the thing is, if you're gonna take up, donate, save, and I'm just putting this in plain words. If you donate eighty thousand, you earmark twenty thousand for a piece of equipment. That piece of equipment costs you better than three hundred fifty thousand dollars. By the time we actually pay for that piece of equipment, it's useful, life is probably ready for trading.
We we own that building over there, and they they put over twelve thousand dollars in that building last summer loan, in the city building. They paid the insurance on the building, everything, it's been a city building since it was built, city's never paid anything to do it. So I think they're getting probably free to keep. Myself.
I I really feel if you're gonna push them to a point where you want to start owning the equipment, where actually you're gonna end up owning by the time everything would be said and done, equipment is really not worth it.
Harley would say so. I thought they always throw them over there like, I'm enjoying this.
Enjoy your social life.
Or by order? You know?
Agreement, which never.
Agreement, the agreement's been expired.
Yeah, there is no conflict. It expired a year ago.
And in the original, original agreement, if you read it, the city was to create a board. The city never created a board, so even after the original agreement was done, the city pretty much did not live up to its end of the agreement, so the agreement was void.
It was mutual, the city and fire.
Yeah, but it still was the city's requirement to put it together. And we didn't do it.
It was also the fire business department, it was a mutual agreement. So we were both guilty of not forming a board.
And even after that happens, the same things that were on that agreement that was never actually met was exceeded by the fire department and the city that's. So why would we start enforcing something that they're going down there?
So it's the recommendation of the committee that we proceed with our agreement?
I, I, my personal feeling is we would be better off going the way we've been going for all these years.
They've had, we've had an agreement with them, but nobody's ever put a board together, ever.
The question that I thought we were discussing was the budget, you know, how many is spent, but if you think that we have an issue there, then.
I really don't think we have an issue, because they opened, they said, anybody in our community is allowed at our meetings. Every meeting, the first thing on their agenda is to talk about their legal and their finances.
They tell you to, they need where they spent the money, what they spent it on?
So I don't see that us going, asking them to come in here is gonna be of any value when they're willing to do it on every meeting day. Which is once a week.
If the council wants something different, we can go forward with it, but.
Probably run smoother, but the government's knows that.
And let's be honest, you know, uh, after so many years of it being the way it's been, they've gone above and beyond, and I think the city has with them also. So why would we push there to be any animosity between the city and the fire department? And we have such a good working relationship as it is right now. If you want to play language terms, you're right.
If the council wants something different, let the committee or let me know.
If you want something different, that's fine.
Well, after visiting with all of them, sitting down at their meetings, discussing it at a meeting, safety meeting, I don't see it's necessary. Now, if somebody else feels different, that's your problem, bring it up. But truly, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
Great.
Now, that.
Okay.
Airport taxiway, engineer proposal. This is something we have to do. And we have to pay three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars to engineering company to, I guess, tell us how much it's gonna cost us the bills. It's gonna be, we have to pay five percent?
That's five percent of the total.
Total what the tax way is gonna cost.
Feds pay ninety percent, state pays five percent, and the local community has to pay five percent of any project related expenses at the airport.
And if we don't do this, we have to pay back all the money we've gotten from that. So it's something I think we need to do.
For the environmental review is what they have to pay back.
Quite good, I.
But it's something that's of good value for our growth.
Pete Lane, I'm supposed to know a few things about tonight, and nobody's told me anything. Harley, you told me I'd know all this stuff by Monday. The cattle, if we're getting paid for the cattle on the.
Yes, sir, I did, so you can scold me if you wish, but I was, my wife had surgery Thursday, and I've not been in the office since Friday morning.
I know that, but I talked to you last Monday.
You understand that? And the egg girl was supposed to be back on Wednesday, and I took Thursday off for the surgery, and I was in for a little bit Friday, and then I've been been wrapping until six o'clock tonight.
So I wanna know when we're gonna know something about it?
Call them first thing in the morning.
Okay.
So we've never been paid that yet?
We have not received any money for the hay that happened over the summer months either, no.
So by the end of the work time, we should know, talking about all the financials on it?
Before that. Stop here and see you Wednesday.
And I wanna know if they're not charging for those cattle, I wanna know why.
I don't, I don't think that they are tonight.
Why?
I don't know, I just said I don't think that they are.
I'd like to see a letter from DNR and see if we can actually, okay.
So would I, 'cause last night I said at the meeting, DNR, when that lady told us we cannot have cattle in our airport. And it ain't within high fence at the whole airport.
That's correct, because of the sewer test. Yep, no, I was there too, and it was because of the testing that was was being reported. We were over on the phosphorus, phosphorus and nitrogen, and that has all been taken under control.
What's nitrogen from? Too much poop?
The nitrogen is not the problem, the phosphorus is where the problem is.
I wanna see another from the DNR.
Cows poop from our properties.
The lady was explaining to me that if we do not bring in any other feed, and the cows are in there eating the grass that's na- that's native or growing, uh, that that helps.
That was all, that was all planted last, last spring, so.
I was explaining to you, I still wanna see a letter from the gal at DNR that says it's okay.
So we should be, we should be getting money from that stuff that was planted?
Only if it's harvested.
Well, they harvested? Cows are just eating what's left after they cut it.
The thing is, we, you had a copy of that agreement.
That you signed?
Yeah, but I signed it, doesn't say anything in there, it's in the final contract, exactly what'll happen, but all we have is something for them to get in there so they have the right to do the egg stuff and the stuff.
Well, yeah, but they told us that all this money's gonna come back to the city.
So far, they have to pay us anything.
And, and did you give them permission to run cows out there?
No, I just signed that letter.
Okay. Well, I think if you owned a farm that size, would you let people run cows free on your pasture? No, and we shouldn't either. So, okay, we'll find out this week. Safety equipment, we do have those blocks down at the, there's five of them. And evidently, they don't know how to use them or something, because we haven't been using them since Bob Evans worked down there. Do somebody show them where they're at, how to use them, or are we gonna have a class, or what are we gonna do on that?
You just had a fatality up north to school last week.
What blocks are you talking about?
For shoring. We have that, that big outfit that goes in the ditch, but that's kinda awkward when they have those other ones that are hydraulic. Set them in ditch, it falls against the other wall, and then you pump it up, you have treated wood on each side of the ditch.
If they don't know how to. Depth requirements for shoring.
Not over your head, I'm sure.
Over six?
No, I think actually if you, you were like OSHA saying, this has been a long time, but it used to be anything over two feet, you had to start shoring, because the human body could do displacement, can do this, we have two feet.
Sure.
It's based on a ratio of depth and width. So the only thing about the blocks down there. I've never seen them open, I know what you're talking about, I haven't seen them before. Or they just use hydraulic jack. But that, the use of those things depends on our soil condition, the depth and the width of your ditch, and a, and a ratio, and I don't, I'm not, I think it's like two to one, don't quote me on that, because I'm not really sure.
Well, if we can't use those, we have to use that other thing.
No, but I'm saying whether you need to use them or not is. And I do know that you could probably go through South Dakota Rural Water Association, and I know that they put on classes or have classes to put on on trench safety.
Maybe we oughta send somebody to that. All I know is we're putting our guys in jeopardy every time they crawl in ditch, face that one up by home, and as deep as that was.
For this class that I'm going to Wednesday and Thursday is just on this kind of stuff.
They'll probably cover some of that.
So hopefully, if I'm there, you might have some information also.
If you're there?
Well, if I'm there, you know, there.
Oh, okay.
It looks like there's classes going on all over the place.
Saying, I know you're going, so I don't know what you're gonna be doing the way.
Probably not much, 'cause I don't know much. Okay, but what I'm saying is, I don't wanna go to a class like this if we're not really gonna be honest about doing this stuff.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna be honest about doing this stuff.
I I agree, but if I have information there, I'll grab it, but somebody here needs to research what we actually have to do.
Same way with the helmets, the hardhat. We need to start using them. We're not, I mean, every time they go in a ditch, they'll use them. Only time they use them is when you made them two, when they were cleaning up tree branches.
They should still be doing that, 'cause they're still cleaning up trees.
And they wasn't using hardhat.
And so the public know, what we're discussing is things that impact our insurance for city insurance. So when we don't do some of these things, our insurance is actually a little higher. So like going to these classes, starting safety programs and stuff, that all has an impact on city insurance.
And the last thing, taser classes, I understand they're starting tomorrow.
Okay, not that we're, we got domestic violence tomorrow for eight hours, but.
Well, maybe that's it, down here. Oh, not taser classes.
We was hoping those taser.
I stand corrected. They're supposed to be in November, Bob Evans, sure.
We thought that we could sell tickets, and people would pay to watch you guys do it.
Well, we're gonna have taser class tomorrow too, so.
Well, I think it's really important to, for our law enforcement to be trained on the use of the tasers.
Yeah.
I just witnessed an incident this last Friday.
Yep, got a shotgun on a cop. That had a taser, they could've got it. I had to use my gun. Yeah, somebody pulls a handgun on me, I'm gonna use my gun.
Well, I I don't think the, I don't think the officers pulled a gun, but.
No, they didn't.
No.
No, they dogfied him, cuffed him, stuck him in the throat. That's for another story, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Craig. Coastal Recreation, Wes?
Yeah, we had a meeting, um, Cindy said their annual poetry thing was kind of a huge hit. They were talking about expanding on that. Paul Carnival was down this year. We looked at bringing park committee together to get a vision, I guess, on where we want our parks to go. Um, we discussed where to put a hybrid crab apple tree. We had Harley give us the old park rules, and looking at them, maybe thinking about if we wanna add or subtract anything, and try to start working on getting something back in place. Um, we discussed signs on the ball fields, and cutting the hillside back against the sidewalk to extend the soccer field. We discussed a sign for the soccer or the skateboard park. And, uh, we, uh, we discussed, maybe talking to Billy about maybe put that ice skating rink back in the corner. And we discussed the weeds on the, uh, um, mud, the mud run area, we need to kinda do something with that, it looks pretty unsightly up there. And then we discussed a couple of concerns some of the paid members had about the Evans plunge. I don't recall what that, what they were. Yep, that's about it, we, uh, something we did talk about, but I didn't think about, what kind of thing we should bring back that yard of the wheat program? Kind of, yeah. Pay people some homage, whatever that is, for keeping their places spruced up. I just think it'd be a good idea, maybe.
Those signs for the skateboard park get ordered?
I'll check.
We said something about that two months ago, that wing for the safety.
Yeah, that's what the center was about, the signs at the skateboard.
Yeah, that's what that was, is the wearing helmets and protective gear while you're at the at the skateboard park is the sign that needs to be up there.
You have a call yet?
Okay.
For the general, this evening, expressed his pleasure that we do have water down at Brookside now.
Yeah, they got that done, didn't they?
They did get it finished up. Well, I don't know if it's finished, but it's.
They got water.
They got water, but the line's in there anyway.
Didn't hit that five rock there?
Evidently not. We could have heard that tonight. We, we know, it didn't show up in our bills if we hit that one.
Yeah, that's a big one.
Thanks, Wes. Harley, do you have anything?
Uh, just a note that the annual meeting with the Key Pot Springs Beautiful was held this last week, and they had some exciting projects, accomplishments that they reported, so it's great to have those folks around, and we did as a city support them, give them two or three thousand dollars, and they complimented the city or thanked the city again during that meeting for providing that. Their main discussion was the highway project and how that'll affect their pods, and they have a new, a new winner for their their citizens' choice, is that what they call it, community choice or? People's Choice Award for their part, the Aces have won it the last three years, and now it goes to the corner at Verizon. And I forget the folks' name, but they're taking care of that one, you'll have to go down and see it and get their name off the off the sign that's in the park there at the Verizon corner.
How do you have a corner across the street, 'cause semis keep going through there.
You have nothing else? I have nothing, so that would be it for our business.
Motion adjourned.
A motion by Craig.
Adjourned.
Dwight, all in favor say aye.
Aye.